Well, it's 2:30, so we'll -- Mayor Davis is running just a few minutes late. We'll go ahead and get started. And Mike, are you going to take off?
I'm going to make one of my quicker handoffs. Maybe I need to stall on that, sure.
No, I apparently can't hit the print button.
So it sounds like we have some handouts with more coming.
Yes.
Lauren plans to present on a housing summit that occurred this summer.
In June.
I'm sorry?
In June.
And can I give you an update of what that exercise was and the outcome of those conversations as an update of what he's thinking about housing? With that, I'll turn it over to her.
So our hope today was, where's the best place to stand? I feel like I'm blocking something. Am I out here?
Yes.
Okay. We had a housing summit in June. One of the things we were hoping to go over with you today is creating a report that could summarize the outcomes of the event, but also getting some direction from you and maybe where you'd like to go with the results of that. So before finalizing that, we were hoping to have a conversation with you about kind of your thoughts on recommended priorities from this event and maybe how we can look to build that into future work plans and what the city's role might be in that. So what you're looking at is a draft report. I'm, like Mike said, going to go through kind of what that day looked like and then what those results were. I think next steps is a critical part. So as we go through this, if you guys could kind of be thinking about some of the things that you've heard from your constituents and things that we'll be thinking about budgeting, how this information will work into this is critical. So we held this in June on the 28th, actually held it at kind of a different location. We talked to people that we looked to invite, suggested, you know, finding kind of a neutral ground. And St. John's Missionary Baptist Church has a really great big gymnasium, kitchen space, and offered to help host this. We had over 32 organizations attend, including representations from several boards and commissions. We actually sent to any board and commission affected by housing a request to choose one representative from their board. So we didn't have a coma violation of any sort, but did have representation from those boards. Also, a variety of different agencies, and we'll kind of give them specifics in a second, along with other different governmental representation, several folks from the faith-based community, property owners, you know, landlords, renters, those kinds of things. Really, our goal was, housing is a very complex issue, and it's easy to kind of get focused on one single type of housing or a single location for housing, an income level, but what gets complicated is there's all kinds of things in between. And you can ask somebody, and we've kind of had this when we talked about housing before, you know, "What brings you to the conversation?" "Well, I'm here to talk about prisoner grand tree," or "I'm here to talk about vets," or "I want, you know, workforce housing." I mean, there's kind of a long list. It all has housing in common, but there's a lot of intricacy between all of those. And so some of that conversation has to happen outside of a decision-making kind of meeting. It has to happen outside of even some of the one-on-one meetings of these groups. It needs to be a huge conversation between all of them. And that's something that staff had ran into, is as we talked to different agencies, different organizations about housing, many of them said, "Well, we do this." And we would kind of point out, "Well, we just talk to these guys, and they also do that." "Well, I didn't know that they did that." And as people looked to the city to say, "Hey, could you guys help with housing?", we had to ask ourselves, like, "Well, are we the right ones to help with that? And is somebody already doing that?" And a huge part of answering those questions was getting all these people in the room. So it really boiled down to looking at an event that would create communication, some education, and possible direction. And this is just an overview of participants. Folks were there for a good chunk of their day, which is always nice to see people have that level of commitment, and it was a very involved event. I kind of popped on here the agenda, and the reason that's important is, the day was kind of a facilitated discussion, and that's important because you've got to kind of lead into all these things. If you just kind of just throw stuff at people, you're going to get a real random mix of reactions. But we were really methodical in saying, "Okay, let's just start with kind of a warm-up of what is your mission statement as an organization? And how did you get involved in housing?" Because that's a, I mean, 30-some-plus organizations all talking about housing. I mean, if you'd asked somebody in town, like, "Oh, who does housing?", most people wouldn't come up with a list of 30. But yet, they all came to the table, and they have housing mattering to them and their board. So having each other understand that was critical. We were divided up into eight tables, so there were small group discussions, and then they did big board or big group report-outs. And that kind of makes for easier conversation and recording. And then we broke into three question sets. So essentially, in the morning, we wanted to talk about existing conditions. What exists in your agency that deals with housing? And then, how are these resources provided to make those services happen? Then next, what is missing? And then we'll talk a little bit more about the matrix. And then lastly, kind of following up with, now that you've heard from your fellow participants, what does that look like? We're going to talk a little bit more about the questions in depth. So we talked about current resources, but what resources are missing? And if this feels a little SWOT-like, you know, SWOT analysis to some folks, it kind of is that. But where we get a little different is when we start to add the matrix in. But what is missing really starts to figure out what that need base is, because people are talking about, you know, what's in their entity or their organization that's missing that they think they could do. What is a community as a whole are we not addressing about housing? And then what types of programs do you wish were out there, but they're really not in your purview? So if you are working in like maybe a substance abuse rehab program, and you're doing housing for families who are trying to move forward, you may recognize that we need additional detox beds, and that's a type of housing, but that's really not in your purview or your program. So you can acknowledge that, but it's not necessarily a place that maybe your organization can step up at. And then, these takeaway questions, these are really like, once people start to see the data, because we've talked about, why are you here? What is it you have? What is it you need? Now, what should we do? And we'll get into a little bit and more into those in that summary and what those recommendations are. But first is, you know, everyone's going to take something different away from this. And just kind of recognizing, even as somebody spends a lot of time talking about housing and dealing with this issue, there's probably something you found to take away from all of this. And then, kind of looking to them, what could you do differently as an organization now that you've learned these things to address some of those concerns? And if you could do one thing different in your organization, what would that be? And then what existing partnerships do you have that you could expand upon to address housing-related goals? The matrix. It looks a little crazy, but one of the things that has, I find is really helpful in dealing with groups, is being able to kind of have some kind of visual representation of all of this. And a SWOT analysis is great, but what's really interesting is, we've got a digital version of this, I'll pull up here in a second, but across this top, there are 53 different types of housing-related services or programs. And that's us boiling them down. Like, people had like two or three that are very similar, so we kind of put them into a big category. Even within those, you have multiple programs. There are 53 types of housing services across that top. And then, along here is everybody who attended. So they were asked as providers, based on our previous conversation, to take their green dots, which are things that they do, and match those to themselves and their services. And then they were supposed to take the red dots were themselves and things they wish were happening or wanted to have happen. And with 53, this gets a little crazy, but what you start to see, and we'll look at the spreadsheet in a minute, is you're going to find that some of these services have zero providers, but 17 people in the need category. So if we've got 17 of us saying, "Hey, we should probably have that," and not one person doing it, that's a great example of a gap analysis. You know, we have a need that's not being filled. But then we have others where we have eight providers and only four for recognized need. So then, we have overlap. So the question is, is there more collaboration opportunity there? Is it possible to take those resources for maybe two of the providers and move them over to one of these areas that we aren't providing services for? It's just some of those questions to ask. And like I said, I mean, this exercise is really just for everybody who is attending to just be able to see in one follow-swoop, what is it that we are all doing? Because there's a lot of people doing great work. I'm going to exit out of this for a second and grab. This spreadsheet is massive, so it's quite difficult to print. When we go to put it as an addendum in the report, it'll be a bit of a challenge. But what you can see here is, this top has those 53 different types of services we talked about, and then there, along the side, are those different entities that attended. But what we've started to do here is start to total those columns. So green, like we talked about, are the dots of what it is you wanted, and what it is, or I'm sorry, what you have and what you wish you had. And here, where these zero to sixes are, means we have six people who wanted it, nobody's providing it. And what you'll see, too, is we've got this highlighted in text, but this does jive with a lot of the recommendations that are come out of this. I think some of these were kind of interesting. People were surprised to find these, like, financial consulting, that's, you know, helping people get their bills in order, learning how to make a balanced budget. And the reason you've got to kind of look into some of these is, for instance, yeah, we have nine providers, but some of those have them integrated into their holistic programs. So if you're working with a particular entity to kind of do something more comprehensive, one component of that may be financial counseling. So trying to take that one and necessarily use another entity might not be as easy, but it's still worth looking at and having some of those discussions and some of those questions. And I can tell you from the attendees, the financial counseling, credit counseling conversation was one where everyone was like, "A lot of us are doing this." Not that it's not important, but is there somebody else that could be handling that or sharing in those resources? So that will be included in the report, but that's just kind of an example of spots where even, I thought this one was really interesting, too, is on subsidized rental housing. You have, you know, a need of at least 10 more providers to meet the request, but that's not even in the zero, the zero-sum category. There's still two providers, but is it really enough? And so exploring these kind of further as we have conversations with the different participants, I think will be critical to see, is it even possible to balance some of these numbers out or meet the requested need? So, in a nutshell, when we look at top three housing resources for need, or I'm sorry, that we currently have, so there are top three current housing resources. These are things we know we have. We have financial credit and counseling, we have life skills classes, and housing stability education. And what I thought's kind of interesting about this is that's like, if we look at 100% of your resources for current housing issues that we have available, about 75% of that is taken up in just these three categories, which means we have a lot of other needs that are only being met by 25% of additional resources. So the question is, is this enough, or do we have other places we need to put that? And I think people were kind of surprised that that is a lot of resources into kind of those three very similar baskets.
What is housing stability education?
You want to take it up on? Sure. Housing stability education can kind of vary between financial education as far as budgeting, kind of, it kind of is composed of all those other things, the life skills, kind of getting people on the right track toward being able to sustain an apartment or a home, to be able to, you know, pay all their bills and provide for, you know, like childcare and things like that. So keeping them on the right track for housing.
Most of the housing stability programs happen while somebody's in their housing situation, but something has arisen and they're trying to stabilize it, rather than, like, a lot of financial crediting and life skills classes happen like while you're in a program or proactively before you go and get an apartment or go and get a house. So this one usually happens kind of when you're in the situation. And they are, they're really important, and education kind of comes up frequently of people just not knowing these things. So these are really important, and clearly, we put a lot of resources into them, but what else? So that leads to the top three, desired housing resources. Approximately 88% of participants identified better communication amongst agencies as something they desired. And that's a really big number. I don't know if I was terribly surprised, but it did, I think it did Evelyn some reassurance that the purpose of the summit was a useful one, because people were able to have conversations and make some realizations that we hadn't had those conversations before. So I think-
Did they learn that because of the summit? Or did they come in having that opinion that there was a lot, there was a lack of communication?
I think many thought that they were communicating, but maybe with one or two agencies, and didn't really realize that they have a much bigger span of folks that they need to be communicating with, and even those that they thought they communicated with, that the level of communication needs to be higher, for sure. So I think some people were very surprised, and definitely the summit was kind of what enlightened them to this, and then those who were already aware became kind of even more aware. So then, approximately 44% of participants identified affordable housing as something they desired in Salina. I will add the caveat that that is a very big umbrella, and that means a lot of different things to a lot of different people, but in general, words that were used in common were safe, quality, affordable, and affordable meaning both low-income to median-income housing. And not necessarily noting that it needed to be provided by any one entity, but just affordable housing. And then, approximately 31% of the participants identified crisis housing funds as something they desired in Salina. And I think there was some really good conversation here had about funding and maybe kind of coordinating programming a bit more, and understanding that need. So having some of those participants in the room, we didn't necessarily realize that some of these other entities were in that arena and worried about crisis housing was So, the matrix occurred, and then we walked through these last three questions as tables doing report-outs and then a larger, bigger group conversation, kind of trying to whittle that down, to say, "Look, talk to us as the city, let us go back and talk to the city commission about these results, what your recommendations are, how to prioritize, but also, like, what can you do? You know, each one of you has a certain level of power within your organization, a certain level of resources and time. Now that you're learning these things, what kind of commitment and changes can you make?" So, one of the things that repeatedly came up was a one-stop-shop for information regarding housing. I'll be honest, I have no idea what this looks like right now, but I can understand the sentiment, and I do think it's something that we wouldn't necessarily be the providers of, but I think if this is something that's an interest to the community, you know, we can kind of help to facilitate that conversation, you know, suggesting different resources. I mean, there's a lot of technology out there today for collaboration, for information posting. I think that they would be more than willing to contribute to that, maybe even find somebody to manage it. But one possibility for us as a city is to help kind of facilitate that conversation further, what that would look like, what kind of data would need to be contributed, what does everybody hope to see on there, things like that. I feel like I use the word collaborate and communicate a lot in this plan, but it, I mean, for every page of notes we got from a table captain, I mean, these words were just repeated all the time. And the ways to collaborate and communicate include funding, programs, resources, just many of them doing similar things, but just not necessarily recognizing prior to this how they could maybe work together to achieve some bigger things. I think one of the things that came out of collaboration and communication, too, from a purely business sense, is when you go to apply for a grant, a lot of times, they're asking, like, "What is the impact level we're going to have for this? Who else is doing this in the community? Can you already work with them?" Being able to say that we've done this kind of level of analysis and started to recognize those can be very helpful in those grant applications. Housing rehab came up a lot. That is, I think, a lot of the tables recognized. We can talk about affordable housing, maybe built new from ground up, but we have a lot of housing stock, it just needs some serious TLC. And how do we do that? I mean, we've talked in the past that there's some financial challenges for kind of making that equation right itself, but are there rehab programs that we can get into the community to take some of our existing housing stock and make that better? So, we've talked about that in previous study sessions, and then we're talking about housing. I think there are a couple entities that identify themselves as potential partners in this, so maybe something worth looking at from a city perspective of how we could maybe partner to enhance our housing rehab resources. Because we can do that to a certain extent right now. The question is, how much more would we want to do that? And what our role would be in that. Education got used a lot. I think it's pretty natural when you're there, and everybody's kind of shocked with things that they're learning. Part of that is saying, "Hey, I'd like us to not be so surprised about this again. How can we educate one another?" And that's agencies sharing educational resources, if they've got a training or something going on, inviting other attendees from the summit, but also landlords and tenants. Evelyn and her team in community relations have really been working to up our game. We hold a housing training in the spring, and it's primarily for landlords, but we have attendees who are tenants, and every year, it changes a little bit. It's a one-day event, but in general, you know, we go over fair housing laws, we go over, you know, kind of best practices for landlords, and then we hit some kind of specialty things. Usually, our code compliance folks are there, and they talk a little bit about property maintenance and those types of things. This last year, we talked kind of current events. We had some specialists come in about tenants who may be doing drugs or sex trafficking in your rental, and how to approach those things and how to deal with them. So every year, we provide that, and it keeps growing, and we anticipate that we'll have more attendees this year than we have in the past. What we took away from the summit regarding kind of that landlord-tenant education was, one, finding some partners who would also like to add content to that day, so I think that's positive. Most people, there's a one-stop-shop event, they would rather go to that to get that information. So we found some excellent partners there for a service we already provide. I think it also helped us to understand maybe some new issues that needed to be discussed at that educational opportunity, and then also understanding maybe how we could partner with other agencies that have clients that go into rental situations and understanding how to be good tenants, what fair housing looks like, some of those things. So there's some potential new educational programs or training we could provide or work with a partner to provide, since we already handle a lot of that. And real estate professionals, Great Plains Real Estate Association had representation there and noted that helping realtors to kind of understand this whole spectrum of the picture could be very helpful. So, potential partner there. And I will say, Great Plains Real Estate Association has been a sponsor of our landlord-tenant education day in the spring for the last couple of years, so they've been part of that in the past. I think a lot of the folks recognize that, I think, kind of answering Carl's question, many attendees knew about the two or three agencies in their purview, but something they realized is they needed to kind of leave their box and look at other folks that were affected by this. And then, kind of pushing this back on themselves, too, the advocates need to speak up more at, whether it's at the local level, state level, or even federal level. And then, you know, I'll put the caveat in here, that this study and collection is not meant to be an exact resource. It is meant to have a conversation, it's meant to collect that data, but if we want to get more into better understanding gap analysis, we want to get better into understanding what those overlaps look like, we would need to decide kind of, do we want to help facilitate that conversation? Are we researching that more? Where are we going from kind of this base-level data next? With that, that is our priority list, and what we're hoping to hear from you is kind of your first thoughts on these priorities, where you might like to see us go with these. And then, based on that, we'll add a last paragraph or last section to the draft plan that would give some of that follow-through, and then add any additional addendums. Like I said, we've talked about kind of an example of the packet that we gave to the table folks, the matrix. I have no idea if we're going to get that one page, but it'll be in font four. And, I think, just a couple other pieces. The recommendations and the priorities are key, and hoping to get your feedback on. Thank you.
I just want to say that I went to the housing summit, and I found it to be extremely valuable, because like you said, there are so many different agencies that are providing some level of housing assistance, you know, whether it's helping people financially, I mean, to, you know, providing places to live. And I think anything that, you know, we can do to continue that conversation about the gaps and overlaps and help, you know, facilitate a one-stop-shop for information. I see Brenda Gutierrez, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but several years ago, didn't, wasn't there a 2-1-1 program where homeless people can dial that and get information on resources?
Yes. Kansas has 100% coverage of 2-1-1.
2-1-1.
And the United States has 98% coverage of 2-1-1.
Gotcha.
Meaning you can find out anywhere in the U.S. about those resources. And if people want to know by the state or by the county, by the quarter, we can get you that data when calls come in. Because some of the top calls that come in in Salina at this time of year are the electricity, you know, thinking about assistance for those type of bill-paying housing and food. Those three are predominantly high during tax season, through tax services, during back-to-school, back-to-school related things. But in general, those three are the top calls that come in in our area.
We did include utility assistance as a housing-type program, because a lot of times, it correlates with that. If you're providing utility assistance, you often provide other housing-associated services, and many people need that utility assistance to not lose housing. So, we did add that and put that into the category under housing, so it is highlighted in the matrix.
So was there a conversation amongst the organizations about how they can move the issue forward, or focus primarily on the city?
No, I think, I think there was a good deal of recognition that there's collaboration that can be had. I think the resource that we add to that is helping to facilitate that conversation, is going, okay, of our attendees, you know, we've got in the table notes, you know, these ones are kind of consistently saying that they've got these resources, that they'd want to enhance these resources, kind of bringing them together and saying, "This is where we ended at our last conversation. Are you guys willing to continue this conversation, and what could that look like?" I think we've been hesitant to move really beyond this, because we wanted to make sure that the commission was aware of kind of the results that they came up with and seeing that it would be fit for us to have those conversations facilitated. But I didn't see, I mean, and Evelyn, and there are other attendees in the audience who were at the summit, but I didn't feel anyone, there was any kind of vibe that it was like, "Nope, this is all the city. You got to build us some houses, and you got to fix these programs." Like, everybody was pretty aware that this is a team effort.
Yeah.
The question is, where do we start, and can somebody kind of bring us together? Because like most nonprofits, or businesses, I mean, you've kind of got this world, and you're trying to keep that running, the effort of facilitating that is usually where everybody runs out of steam.
I agree with Commissioner Hodges that if, I would imagine, the people walked away sort of in shock if they saw the full graph and really about helping to collate that information for them, or if you crack the data for them, then we can continue the conversation. That would be very useful in that way.
Could we get a copy of that entire graph? Because, like I said, you know, there's a whole gamut of housing issues where you're talking short-term, long-term, quality, I mean, I'm not sure who spearheads all that. It's pretty, you know, pretty intense when you start looking at all of it.
Well, and I think that's why they boiled it down to these priorities, and I think that's where you get those top three kind of numbers, saying, you know, we can't, we can't fall on every one of these swords.
Right.
But are there ones, and as we identified in the report, the ones that came to the top as priorities are the ones that really affected the most amount of attendees and affected the most amount of people that participate in those organizations. affected the most amount of people that participate in those organizations. And I think things like the one-stop-shop, you know, trying to find agencies like ourselves or United Way that are kind of already collectors of information might be a good start. I could see something like the one-stop-shop. You know, we would, we would call participants like Brenda and other agencies that kind of have some of those larger databases and say, where would you guys like to start? What do you, what do you think is critical information? And kind of start to outline that. I think what I'm looking for, particularly as a director from you guys, is if having that conversation between now and budgeting is worth it, I can start to kind of look at these things and go, okay, here's the time and money it would cost as a project to work with these entities to create a one-stop-shop. You know, right now, I can't tell you as, what, what level of effort would we do, but I can tell you what it would take to have the conversation. You know, more housing rehab programs. I know from a staff perspective and time perspective, I don't know if we could run a full-blown rehab program. Do I think there's entities out there like the Chodo, or North Salina, or Habitat for Humanity that would make excellent partners in that? Yes. If that's the kind of thing that you're like, can you guys put together, have that conversation put together, kind of a project outline, those things that we can do for sure.
You know, Lauren, you talked about the rehab program. Where does the shortage fall in this whole thing, that the housing shortage itself?
Well...
Seems like it quickly involves price, but...
Yeah, I mean, housing rehab, the real challenge is, the real estate market is all on comps, right? So, if I've got a house that I picked up for, let's say, between $10,000 and $25,000, more than likely, you are going to be putting roughly $50,000 to $60,000 in. Because at that price point, you have window issues, you have roof issue, you have foundation issue, or you have HVAC issue, or some of each. And so, you're going to have to put some real dollars into those. What happens is, when you're done, nothing around you comps at that same price, and so it's very hard to get a bank to lend any kind of money on that. Long-term, ideally, what happens is you find concentrated neighborhoods or areas, you build programs that start to do that, and you get enough of them in a neighborhood that you start to have good comps, and then the private market will start to come in and do some natural flipping. But the programs are often used to kind of pick that, start that. You can get very program-specific. There's some good examples like in Topeka, where they have a rehab program that just does windows and roofs. And sometimes that can be really big in the neighborhood. They're great visual cues that encourage people to better their homes, but they also start to lower utilities, and that's a huge one for, for many people. I'm always shocked when we have people call the office and they spend $800 to $900 a month in utilities for a rent that's $800. And it's because, and in ownership, I don't want to just pick on rentals, but, I mean, basically their money is just floating out the window, because they have old windows, old roofs. So, I mean, there's, there's some objects there, too, on how we can get very specific.
And when Lauren talks about lending, it's not just lending to the owner or the landlord that's doing the rehab, but we're seeing it just in terms of, even if someone wanted to buy one of those rehab homes that Lauren's describing, if you're buying it out of a price point, it's hard to get a loan. We, years ago, Jason and I had conversations, I believe it was a father and son, who were really enthusiastic and had, I don't know, six to eight or maybe more examples of homes they bought and basically rehabilitated like Lauren described. In our initial conversation, they were very optimistic and upbeat, and then we followed up with them six, nine months later, and they'd come to this realization that they're having to hang on to the properties and try to rent them, because they couldn't sell them and keep their model going.
Well, and that's where, I mean, we've seen the biggest impact, like if we take other communities that are dealing with the same kind of housing stock issue like us, we can take neighborhoods in Wichita, and then Topeka, and KCK, and it doesn't matter how big your population is, that whole comp scenario is universal. And so, when you don't have that kind of demand that's creating that natural turnover, you have to kind of start, you know, incentivizing the market. And so, a lot of them, you've seen kind of, they'll, they'll do the roof and window program, somebody's doing that one, then coupled with maybe a whole-house rehab program, then coupled with another program that's maybe doing front porch kind of stuff, and you start to kind of see those layer enough over a few years, and you start to get your comps to come up, and then you start to get that natural market to turn over.
Right, and we've, with the help of North Central Regional Planning, have been doing roofs and windows and water heaters and furnaces, a limited amount of funds, and it's basically emergency assistance-type stuff, but I can't say that it's been significant enough to kind of start, spark the momentum that Lauren's describing.
Well, I think, I mean, that definitely comes down to a prioritization type of thing, is what is our role in something like that? You know, and how do things like a land bank work with those types of programs? So, there's kind of a bigger issue there. I, I do personally, my, my thoughts, just from a professional planning perspective, is I do think there's a lot to be had in the rehab category, because the cost of building new is, is also high, and you have to have a certain level of demand to justify that, certain amount of space to justify that. And some of our best neighborhoods at the core of our community do not have the space to take those new units, but they do have a lot of great houses that just need some serious attention. And it'd be sad to lose those, because if we, if you're not using something like a rehab tool, the natural market's not going to kick in, even with a whole bunch of new employees. So, trying to kind of find that is, I think, and it's not, it doesn't have to be all us, but how are we a part of that?
Not to put you on the spot, but you might speak a little bit to the land bank and Chodo, and kind of where those things stand?
So, I mean, something Evelyn and I want to explore a little bit in like the first quarter of 2020, is what it takes to put a land trust together? Because I think you need both to balance, to make the bank as powerful as you want it to be, and that starts to kind of, you have two types of housing really when we're talking about rehab. You have rental rehab, and you have for-sale or owner-occupied rehab, and you need a little bit of both. The trust creates that environment in which you can do both, and you stabilize a neighborhood without gentrification. Because, I mean, as much as the natural market is great, you can also have it get to the point that it kicks everybody out of the neighborhood, because it just becomes too expensive. So, when you use a land bank to kind of hold on to properties till they're ready to be rehabilitated, you can work with something like a Chodo or another entity like Habitat for Humanity. I think in Topeka has a relationship with their land bank to move properties and do rehab that way. So you can recognize that, and if you remember, like in the policy document, we talked about those types of entities can be exempt from some of the rules, so there's an easier transfer over to them. And then, in the development agreement that you do on a land bank property, you could have a go to a land trust, and that they have to develop it for rental, or they have to develop it for owner-occupied, and that will kind of help to not only stabilize the neighborhood, but seed it with some of those good comps.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, so I get, I get the concept of the land bank, we've been over that, and, but, and maybe you delineated it and I just didn't understand it, but like, so the land trust, do they hold the funds to then help with, with the rehabs? I mean, is that, the, the bank is actually what holds the property, and then the trust has the funds to make it happen?
So typically, the bank is, it's literally holding properties.
Right.
And you can acquire, sell, but it's just kind of a property-holding place. The trust is kind of the next level, that the trust can then develop a property and, and choose to either sell or to rent. And then what's different about the trust is, when it sells a property, for instance, it would create a 100-year lease on the property, so it will own the ground underneath, but the, the physical structure of the house would be under this 100-year lease, and that is a regular-type residential mortgage method, so you don't need any kind of specialty loan for that. And basically, what it, the trust would say is that, you know, here's the value of the home. Let's say that homeowner stays there for the next five years, the neighborhood's improving, you see like a $15,000 increase in value, or maybe 20, 30, whatever that is. When you go to sell the house, in those documents, it would say that the, the leasing could take 10% of that gain, but the rest would stay with the trust and go back into other properties, future properties, and, but while you have that for that five years, or however long you want to own it, you're still maintaining that property, taking care of it just like you own it. And what it does is, when that house goes back on the market for sale, it would go back at that original price, so it's not going up as the market goes up. Let's say we sold the house for $98,000, assessed value now is 102. A small portion that would go with the previous owner, the rest would stay with the trust, and go into buying new properties, to maintaining properties, whatever it took.
Where are you going to count on the appreciation to make the difference, or what's the incentive for the leasing to improve the property if they're only going to get a part of the profit?
Well, the leasing, with the community, with the land trust, the good thing about is that you partner with different organizations, so there might be a financial stability organization that you partner with. These different organizations to help build the, kind of that, that consumer's portfolio or, it's, because they're really just using this as a stepping stone to get into something else, so they're, they're kind of looking forward on that path toward, you know, increasing home ownership, so it's really built for them to learn those skills and move on to the next level.
But if you appreciate, let's say, if the question is like, why would I improve that property at all, you're still going to take a certain portion of that assessed value. So, if you, your family grew, you had bought the house, and you're like, I really need to add an addition, I got some inheritance, okay, you're going to make that improvement. The overall assessed value of the house has gone up. You know, you may be able to get higher on the market, but what's assessed value has still gone up, and you would take a certain portion of that. So you would see some of that improvement. The other thing that it does that I think a lot of other programs don't with a trust is, it, it does incentivize people in that they have some kind of takeaway, and we've now set them up for future housing purchases, which means we start to create a whole housing ladder. I mean, one of the problems that we talk about in like Housing Economics is you have missing rungs in the ladder, right? And so, there's no use in getting somebody on a rung one, and they're never getting a rung two or three. So this starts to kind of, they leave with a little something, and it allows them to progress, but we still stabilize that neighborhood, so we don't lose rung one either.
And it might give someone an opportunity to move from renting substandard to having some equity in something that's more livable, and then try to progress, is that one described?
Well, and a lot of times, you'll see the trust do owner, owner-occupied and rentals, and with the income from the rentals, you can start to pick up more owner-occupied, and so you can start to build on kind of those neighborhood incentives a bit more. And it's, it's an amazing thing how, how just humans react when positive things happen in their neighborhood. It doesn't matter, and people will start to mow their lawns more, people will add flowers, people just, they start to take care of things as soon as they start to see that others are making those improvements. And so you will just all, overall, see a general economic improvement in the neighborhood.
Like a new street.
Where would the funding come from, and has anybody given us any thought? I, I understand the buy-sell, you know, because you're turning those dollars over, but when you start to go to buy rent, you can go, you can go through a lot of dollars in a hurry. Even though you're getting rent money, it doesn't nearly come back to, to fill in that bucket that you can buy more, so. Did anybody talk about any funding mechanisms?
Well, I think there's, there's quite a few kind of conversations going on in different entities about, about different funding sources. I think there's some private entities that are, are looking to, to donate to housing, to find kind of an equitable way to do that, maybe to make an impact in housing, but not necessarily through like the housing authority or something like that. But how, how do you start to make those improvements? You know, when we talk about programs like roof and window repair, there, there are funding sources, whether it's Federal Reserve of Kansas or other entities, that those are programs that they've administered before, I think we could apply for, especially with a partner, and get, get good response on how to pay for some of those.
Yeah.
CDBG is, is one resource for funds, too.
Now, are we looking at keeping like both the land bank and the land trust within like Development Services with, or is that something that eventually? Because I understand that, you know, initially, I mean, there's going to have to be some organization that has some degree of stability and history running it, but I didn't know if that would ever morph into something that, say, like the Chodo would assume control over.
Looking at my...
We've talked about this a whole lot, but I, I think there's certainly an opportunity for our organization to try to, you know, get the momentum going and get it started. But if it takes on the life that we want it to, it's quickly going to overwhelm staff and...
That's what I was going to say, staffing was my other comment I had written down. I mean, it's, it's labor-intensive.
Well, if we look at successful examples around the state, I think we will probably always be the owners of the bank, and it makes sense to a certain extent, because our role as a governmental agency in taking that, and the whole concept of the responsibility of taking those properties and disposing them, I really think belongs with this body.
I get that.
But once we move those properties on to do these other things, like I said, Habitat for Humanity, Chodo, there are other entities, like Lawrence has a very, very successful land trust or housing trust, and their Chodo and housing trust are one and the same. And, you know, and there's a lot of kind of common sense cost saves there. Their executive director is, is a realtor, so they take care of all of their, their real estate costs in-house. They're also like a certified first-time homebuyer educator, so they do that education in-house, and they, they're ready to like, as soon as the house is ready, to get somebody in the door, because they usually have pre-approved people ready to go. They've established relationships with banks. During the last recession, they were the only builder of new affordable housing in Lawrence that kept building the entire time.
With respect to Arlene Bank, I, I think it's probably worth sharing, you know, we formed it, and some of you've had questions about whether anything's happened, and we haven't taken any properties in, but I would tell you is, we've looked at opportunities, but to the prior point, kind of in response to Commissioner Hayes' question, we've been mindful of not just taking a property because it's available, we'll figure something out later. We were looking for strategic properties that have the opportunity to, you know, not just be a single redevelopment in the neighborhood that creates some momentum. And additionally, we may have shared it previously, but Wyandotte County kind of took a different approach, and they, they initially said they're, they're going to take every property that went for tax foreclosure in the county, and it didn't take them long till they were overwhelmed with literally thousands, and were sending themselves weed letters for mowing violations, and realized they needed to back up a step, so.
Well, and they have, they, they created an entire division or department of like two or three people to just manage their flipping program. That's where, again, like looking to something like the Chodo, I mean, they have access to funds, for instance, under home. They, they have access to, of all the home funds that come in at the state of Kansas, they, 15% of them are reserved for community housing development organizations or Chodos. So I think there's definitely some opportunities there. There, there are other types of entities that can step up and do those kinds of things. I can't foresee us being the long-term manager of that with our current staffing, but I think the relationship between a land bank and a land trust, it can be critical, especially in a community like ours. We saw examples in San Francisco in some of their, you know, neighborhood areas where commercial properties got picked up into their trust, that had been longtime commercial businesses at that neighborhood level, that for whatever reason were not going to be able to stay, and it would have changed the entire neighborhood character, and they were able to stabilize those, keep them in the neighborhood through their trust program.
And our Chodos more active recently, and starting to get organized and take on some projects.
They have three houses under, they purchased three houses, and one goes on the market this week, their first flip.
Is there anybody from the Chodo that's here?
I don't see anybody.
Oh, well, I was going to say, so...
I'm on the board, so...
Okay, well, well, good, then you can answer.
Nope.
Well, no, I just meant, okay, so Chodo has been included in these conversations, and they're, they're aware of the whole land trust thing, and they're, they're at least in the loop, and it's not like, you know, somebody's going to come up to them on the street tomorrow and say, hey, I hear you're doing a land trust. They, they're, and they're supportive of that?
Yeah, and we've seen, Gary, like Evelyn was at the State Housing Conference this year, I, and a couple other... I and a couple other folks from our team were at the State Housing Conference last year. Gary Habey with the CHODO, who's the executive director, has been attending those. You know, we've sat in on several of the same sessions and kind of started to have that conversation, you know, kind of cornered Lawrence and Topeka at lunch and said, so, how do you guys do this? Like, what's the advantage of, like, how does your CHODO get involved? Knowing that, like, if we look at a lot of successful communities that have a CHODO, have a housing authority, and have some kind of city-based resources dealing with housing, a lot of times the development side goes to a CHODO. You know, Housing Authority handles those federal HUD programs, like Section Eight vouchers. The city is often kind of the, either the pass-through for grants, kind of the administrative side of a lot of things. But a lot of times a CHODO is the developer. You know, they're securing funding, they're doing brick and mortar stuff. And then that triangle can work in different ways, like through the land bank or land trust, developing those properties, or housing authorities can work with CHODOs. There's a variety of different ways that those three entities can work together. So I mean, there's, like I said, and that's kind of why I looked at mine. I mean, this is a conversation we've been having for probably twelve to sixteen months. I mean, is this even a capacity that the CHODO could handle? Are they the right entity to do that? Those kinds of things. And I, my take on it is you're kind of at discovery level. And, you know, I would think it'd probably be logical to maybe go to Lawrence this spring, take a few people, have a conversation with their CHODO slash Housing Trust, and ask them how they've done that. From a money perspective or how you funded things, I will tell you, Lawrence kind of had a little windfall. They had a large municipal project, I think some kind of stadium or something that they came way under budget on, and made the decision with that excess budget that they put it into their trust to deal with affordable housing. So that is, I mean, they seeded theirs that way. But there are other ones that haven't been seeded. You can go out and get funding from other places.
Gary and I attended a housing conference, I don't even know how many years ago, in Lawrence, and their Housing Authority gave a tour. And it was, they had a very unique, creative combination of a director, they had a working relationship with a builder, they they built houses for them for hire rather than for profit. And they, as they got a property, they tried to work with that builder to come up with a house that architecturally and cost-wise fit into the neighborhood and would try to customize. But I think that was after years of trial and error, and they were able to build a kind of a nest egg and administer it. And that that made me what we have to do is we kind of start small and build. As you know, even if even if you said today, we want to staff this with three people and invest, I don't think I can find you the money to do that without some new source of revenue. So it's going to have to kind of build on itself, and the numbers are going to have to work.
Well, maybe even baby steps. You know, CHODO stepping up and starting to do more housing full rehab, maybe our complement to that is a roof and window program. You know, something along those lines.
You mentioned the Housing Authority, and on somewhat related topic, it might not hurt just to give the commission an update on the follow-up on their request of us and where we're at, and when we'll be coming back, if you could.
Well, I think just talking with Greg and just kind of trying to get some of those details in order to bring that RAD conversion letter back in front of you guys, there the Housing Authority's hope was to get support from you on that. I think the question that we left off with last time is better defining kind of that fiscal business relationship, you know, who's taking responsibility, liability, risk, as we kind of break that out. It's a bit of a different structure than we've used in the past. And then I think the secondary portion of that is looking to, you know, if the whole the whole deal doesn't fall through, like, how, who owns the houses or who owns the units? How how do they get disposed of, things like that? Am I missing something at the moment?
The initial request was just for that letter of support, but we recognize that while, you know, we could stop there, we felt like you needed to have a full understanding of where all this was headed, the Housing Authority's role on our behalf or on your behalf as the City Commission, just making sure that you have a good understanding of kind of everything from the proposed model and the finances and the developer fee to the number of properties that will be sold, the redevelopment approach that will be taken. What we didn't want to do is do the letter of support, have the Housing Authority and their partner commit considerable time and money towards the project, and then have you understandably ask somewhere further down the line, wait a second, we didn't we didn't understand this, meant all of this, so.
Essentially looking for more detail, is just kind of so that we're not left asking more questions.
So does that letter of, some of the things I remember we talked about at that study session were the Housing Authority's plans to more or less concentrate their holdings in one geographical area. Is that something that will be included in that letter of support that we, that that policy, that that we align?
I don't think it's in the letter of support, but I think it's in the plan that is kind of implied that this is the path they're headed down.
Right, because, I mean, just, you know, speaking for myself, I had, I mean, while I understand that that may be more convenient for for them from a maintenance standpoint, I have real concerns about concentrating all their effort and their resources and their housing in one area. And another thing that came up during that time, too, was the Centennial Park redevelopment. So is that letter of support would be then, would that be be considered a stamp of approval for that?
Those are in zero way connected.
Okay.
Zero way.
Gotcha. I just want, well, no, I just wanted to make sure because we did talk about that at the same study session.
Well, and I think that was, I think, very eager on their part to kind of be able to share with you that vision and kind of think about that. But they're in zero way connected. I mean, they have the ability to do a RAD conversion.
Right.
You know, that's, and I mean, where they concentrate them? I mean, it's no different than if a private sector contractor came in and said, I bought these ten lots, I'm building here. I mean.
Right, but when, but when, like, I look at their their holdings around town, and, you know, their stated thing is, you know, we want to concentrate in this area. I think it just, it brings up a whole bunch of social questions in terms of, you know, impacts on schools, impacts, you know, on the kids going to those schools and, you know, I mean, it just, it's it's kind of like, to me, it, you're you're going back to, you know, where you were isolating lower-income families, like, whether you want to call it, you know, ghettos or whatever.
Call it the projects.
Yeah, or the projects. I mean, and I don't know. I just, so that that was something I was extremely concerned about in terms of of their plan.
I I definitely, I I can see where you're coming from. And I think that can come up a part of that discussion about RAD and location. What I would point out about Centennial Park is you, the city, own that property. And whether you choose to sell that to them or not is a totally different transaction. So they don't have to go hand-in-hand. Their conversion to move to RAD is about that financing mechanism and building that out.
Right.
And I think they were just looking for opportunities to do that. That was one identified opportunity, but they obviously were open-minded about other locations as well and ask us for recommendations.
And making it clear that that sale isn't easy. I mean, there's a vote involved, and because this doesn't need a parkland, and there's a lot of other.
But it was kind of a last-minute idea that was thrown into the conversation. But I don't, I don't think they have their hopes pinned to it by any means.
Assuming the city can, staff can satisfy where they believe the risk is at and staff that out, how long a time is it before we can give them some answers about that letter?
Well, where does it stand in terms of their follow-up with us?
I mean, I don't, I don't want to speak for Tina right now. Our our hope was to to be back in front sometime in January in front of the City Commission. So what meeting that is in January, I'm not sure right now.
And I think one other point of clarification that we want to provide to you is the Housing Authority operates with considerable autonomy. And Greg's actually going back through kind of the formation to give a clear direction to all of us on exactly how much autonomy that they have, because I want you to be fully aware of that as you, you know, authorize them to go forward. And repeating myself somewhat, but we don't want them to be so far down the line in terms of this project and then the concerns raised. If had we known that, we would have asked you to think differently about this. We, they're ready to go, they have a developer with a model that they have done elsewhere and want to replicate here. So I think once they get the go-ahead, they're going to move pretty quickly and just don't want them to run ahead of you too much.
Well, I think it's important staff that does its work there. They have a lot of assets, and we wouldn't want to fall into a situation where, you know, we wouldn't have been aware of it prior.
You know, a lot of inventory and significant dollars in terms of sale and then investment and developer fee, which there's nothing wrong with that. In fact, it's amazing that they can commit to what they presented to us. But you don't want the developer fee to be a surprise for you at the tail end either.
So kind of coming back around to the housing summit report, we'd like to be able to finalize this, including some of your thoughts there at the end, adding our addendums, kind of doing some last-minute tweaks, whole matrix in the back. What what are your thoughts on, I mean, is it safer for staff to say that City Commission is okay with us further exploring some of these priorities and starting to better understand the city's role in that and how we can, you know, what those costs might be or how we can facilitate that collaboration?
Yeah, facilitating the conversations and the collaborations. I mean, I think it it makes sense, because something that I took away from that was people were more than willing to have these conversations. But like you said, it's like, once you leave, you go back to your own little silos and you're doing your own thing. Whereas if you have, you know, someone like Evelyn or you to be going, okay, it's six weeks, we need to follow up on this, where are we at? I think that that, I think that that would be a good resource if if we have staff to provide that.
It seems to me if you've got thirty-two stakeholders and they come to this understanding of that grid, that if you've got some identifiable needs, three or four, whatever, those upgrades could be, they'll be able to collater on those things. And they can be more important advocates than the CHODO or the Land Bank.
I think it would be helpful, too, when you're applying for grants, too, that we have identified, you know, where where the where the absences are and where the gaps are. I mean, I think that was really, really well done.
And that was kind of one of our hopes in putting the report together. I mean, I mean, we could have just sent out the matrix, but we wanted to kind of create a document that gave some record to this, just a summary, but also for the stakeholders to be able to use. They gave us their time. We wanted them to have something that if they needed to include that with a grant report or kind of say, look, our community is one that's communicating about these issues, we're forward-thinking, that they would have that. A lot of times, that's sometimes what you need to be on the top of the grant pile and not somewhere in between. So our intent is following this meeting probably in the next week or so, get these last pieces wrapped up, and then we'll post it online under the Community Relations portion of the city's website.
Is there any, Pete, to separate you from us, because we're all part of the same city, but any public comment or any any non-staff or staff comment?
Was there any discussion under the education components of including also homeowner education? Because I see you've got tenants, landlords, and all sorts of people. And I just, I just wonder if there's not something to be done with new homeowners. I mean, as you drive around town and you look at properties, and you know, this one's nice and this one's not so good. You know, when I talk to people, they say, oh, that not-so-good property is probably a rental. Well, I'm not sure that's a fair assumption. And I just wonder if there aren't some new homeowners or homeowners who have just not ever quite figured out how to take care of a place.
That did come up in some of the conversation. For a lot of programs, if you're a first-time homebuyer, there's the financial stuff that's covered.
Right.
But what isn't always covered is home maintenance.
Yes.
And so there was some discussion about those who are providing first-time homebuyer training of maybe working with the tech school or or another entity, like even like Boy Scouts or something like that, to say, hey, would you hold a Saturday morning workshop and just talk about, you know, the pieces of a toilet and how if it gets plugged, you know, what do you do? Just real basic home maintenance kind of stuff.
Or if the roof leaks, you know, it's not okay to just put a bucket there for the next five years.
Yeah.
There's, there are consequences to not doing the right thing.
And I haven't seen the material on the first-time homebuyer program in a long time. Is it all financial? Have you seen it? Or does it have any home maintenance?
Well, I used to be a housing counselor, so I know that it's not just financial. It is some home maintenance stuff, some tidbits about that. You know, when it when it all comes down to it, it's about what people can afford, and it's so costly. But there are some some tidbits about that.
Well, not all first-time homebuyer training is created equal. I mean, some some of the programs, it's like, just here's a basic brush-through, take our online survey kind of thing, homework, where some had really in-depth programs that were like built into their their bigger programs.
But I'm sure we can get that material, Kansas Housing Resource Corp., on their first-time homebuyer. I know they have some materials. It'd be kind of interesting to look at that. That'd be, that'd be a good place to start.
Joan?
Also a long homeowner, I was wondering where our city lies on the scale of percent of home ownership, owner occupied, you know, as related to the average? And then assuming that it's not great, are we talking about ways that will do a lot to get people into their own homes?
So I can double-check. So the the LIVS-Salina Plan has those ratio breaks out, and I'd be happy to send those to you, Joan, that talk about like percentage of of how how many people own, how many people rent, are the rentals owned by somebody here, from somebody out of state, that kind of thing. I, you know, we'd like to kind of follow up on this sometime. I mean, I think it'd be interesting, the the LIVS-Salina Plan doesn't specifically say like, whoa, you have so much of your housing dedicated to rental. It's not like an alarming number. But I haven't looked in a while, kind of like, what's the new established healthy rate? You know, is it a fifty-fifty combo? Is it a, you know, sixty-forty? Like, what is that healthy rate? I think it varies a lot depending on your community. Like, you'll go to a college-based community, they're going to have higher rental ratios, right? So I can do a little bit more follow-up on that for you. But the LIVS-Salina Plan, the numbers are still fairly relevant, and it wasn't like an alarming amount of rental versus ownership.
Is that the one that was done, gosh, how many years ago was that?
Sixteen, sixteen or sixteen.
Twenty sixteen, I think.
Okay.
So just three, four years ago.
As I recall from, when I looked through the plan, what it said is Salina's homeownership rate is actually a little higher than some of our peer communities. But two of those peer communities were Manhattan and Lawrence, which, of course, you know, kind of, as you noted, kind of skews the.
But I know years ago, first of all, not everyone should own a home. I mean, there's nothing wrong with rentals, because some people don't have the ability to, whether it's take care of a property or the financial ability. So so there's reasons why individuals, and this was years ago, and it'd be interesting to look at that now, but I was shocked when we were looking, I believe it was Dodge City, Salina, and Johnson County. Johnson County had a higher, had a lower owner-occupied rate than we did.
Well, I'm thinking.
But that's because of the big, so, you know, it's, I'm not sure what those numbers tell you, but that was shocking to me.
For someone to own their home instead of rent means that a lot of times, you know, if you're going to rent a house that's worth fifty thousand, you're going to be paying two-thirds of, you know, your mortgage payment is going to be two-thirds what the rent is, something like that. So it means that you have more money for daycare, groceries, you know, to buy things, whatever. And it means that you might stay in one place longer, you know, which means more stable You know, just just be able to contribute more in your community if you're owning. And so there's a reason to want to have more.
Well, and a lot of the programs tend to be very owner-centric, because to be a landlord is a lot of work.
Yes.
So a lot of rehab programs are about selling. Rental is kind of a long-term thing if you have a capacity for it. But a lot of rehab programs are about selling the property and getting it. But I think just to what you're saying.
Plus, you're turning those dollars over also, as we talked about. So you can continue to do more properties if you're rehabbing.
If the house is available, too, have thirty to forty thousand dollars in repair, just because you can afford a mortgage of fifty thousand. I don't know how great it is to take that on when we have a lot of properties that have serious financial, whether it's basements or roofs and stuff. I don't know if that's better for somebody to take on that kind of burden and not have it into mortgage and have to figure out how to pay that later.
So I found what the housing study says, and it says we have a good renter-owner split. Salina has a good balance between owner-and-renter occupied housing, with about thirty-six percent renter-occupied homes and sixty-four percent owner-occupied. Salina's owner-occupied percentage is much higher than comparison communities, which are a close to fifty-fifty split. While it's important for the market to offer a good supply of rental housing, a higher ratio of renter-housing can present more challenges from a maintenance standpoint, and then it provides a.
And then it provides a comparison table of Salina, Emporio, Lawrence, Leavenworth, Manhattan, and Topeka. So, Emporio is a university down the road.
There's, there's a university down the road.
And then the other piece of analysis that it provides is it stratifies our community by income level, and then gets to your point of what's affordable, whether it's rent or mortgage payment, and then compares that to available housing price points, and it identifies where we have a surplus in a particular price point and where we have a deficit. The difficulty becomes the deficits are in price points that don't support themselves in terms of, you know, new construction. And that's, that's kind of that rehab question, if we can find a way to get that pump primed.
Which, which brings me to my next comment, is I really think we need to focus on not why we can't provide a rehab program, but how we might be able to do that, because it seems to be that that is pretty key to making this work, whether that means accumulating, committing resources of some sort, whether that be private or public sector resources or staffing appropriate to get that job done. And it doesn't have to be a huge program, but I think we need to start down the road of trying to do that, because it's pretty clear that because of the economic influences you talked about, and I've heard many others talk about, it's very difficult for the private sector to go in and make that happen without some assistance.
The, the, I agree, and the table that I was describing identifies a deficit of 2,009, 2,930 units for households with incomes between $0 and $25,000. That's a pretty tough price point. Beyond that, the next deficits start to occur in the 100 and, to 150,000 range at 320, and 150,000 and up at 140.
One of the other reasons that trusts get identified for doing the kind of work we're trying to do for sale to owner-occupied is you do all the effort to improve this home, get, you meet your minimum income level, and then that person goes and sells it. In a lot of programs, it can sell to just somebody on the private market, and it might become a rental. Somebody's like, "Oh, there's a great investment property." That's not the point of those. And so, a housing trust creates the environment that stabilizes that, provides that owner-occupied option, and then starts to incentivize the private market that, "You like this? Cool, well, you go invest dollars in this rental. You know, that one's over here, it's only $30,000. Flip that and make it a rental." But these kinds of programs are designed to, to really keep that if it is meant to be owner-occupied at that certain level in the long term, and a trust is a really good way of doing that.
It's quarter of four. Is anyone here wanted to discuss any of the topics?
Last week you discussed the issue of having portable generators at your activities?
I think...
From the downtown ordinance?
The mayor did mention that for food trucks.
Oh, okay.
Yep, and we did identify decibel level for them.
But you addressed the population, pollution issue. Are you gonna put carbon monoxide monitors? Because if you put a generator in a stationary position, it's gonna pollute air. These small generators, small internal combustion engines are the most polluting engine on the planet. And if you put them in one fixed location, now you're gonna have pollution problems. We're trying to clean up the plastic, now you're gonna turn around and pollute it over here. So, you're not really gaining anything. Why can't you run underground electrical lines from a main electrical source instead of using portable generators? Because those motors pollute terrible.
Well, what we've looked at in example codes, because I'll let Public Works speak, and we speak to maybe underground electricity and things like that, but what we've looked at is limiting the duration in which those generators can be on for a very small amount of time. In general, while they're serving food, most of them do not have a generator running full-time, and then those generators, there's, there are noise regulations for that. I'd have to look for carbon monoxide, but I do know we put language in there that says, you know, "You can't be near a major vent" or something like that. It's kind of same kind of verbiage as school just applies to, like, for their parking spaces by the playgrounds and stuff like that.
And our, our downtown project included electrical at the street. I think what we're trying to power is beyond the typical 110 outlet that's there, plus trying to respond to kind of the pop-up portable nature of food trucks and the expectation that goes with them in turn. It's just hard to anticipate all the locations they might want to set up.
Good, good point, yeah.
That is, use that as an opportunity to, you know, just to bring up the idea that we need to be thinking about ways that we reduce our carbon outputs and our consumption in general with everything we do.
Farmer's Market is a fieldhouse Tuesday. Buy local. We're a local.
Excellent. Well, you have till 5:04, so you can discuss it. Now, do you have what you need?
I think I have what I need. Do you guys have any other questions for myself or Evelyn? Like I said, our, our plan will be to kind of add that last paragraph, make a couple final tweaks, and then that'll go on the community relations webpage on the city's site, so people will be able to get that later.
Is the plan for your department to carry this under your leadership at this point, and then at some point turn it over to some super agency or, or super committee?
I, I...
Or would this be an ongoing?
I heard ongoing exploratory facilitation of different discussions, and as we kind of come along, I think each one of these, and we, you know, maybe start to get a little more clear on what that could look like, is probably coming back to the body and saying, "Okay, we've talked to the entities that wanted to do more about education, things like that." And we've even talked about having the same event, like, the next year. Are we making any progress on these priorities? Do we need to have, you know, are these the same or every other year? I think just the conversation effort alone of keeping that kind of on their calendars and having that regular discussion wasn't necessarily a bad thing, and there was a lot of support for that.
Because this looks like you could easily have two full-time folks coordinating this, because it's something that goes on perpetuity.
Lauren and I really haven't had the chance to talk about it, but, at least this part of it, but, you know, there are listservs for all sorts of different positions and professions. It makes me think that maybe within those agencies, listservs by topic might be something that we can facilitate. So, it helps them remember as they're raising a question on education, here are my fellow organizations that, that, you know, are kind of pretty determined to be interested in that conversation. Maybe we can set that up and kind of try to foster communication in that way, but not be responsible for being the traffic cop of all that.
Well, there's some good, like, tech, online, cloud-based stuff that I've used with other groups in other communities where it, it's got a calendaring component, it's got listservs, like, it, it doesn't necessarily have to be hosted on the city's website or something, but it's, they as a group can, can decide, do they want to kind of have a collective spot in which they want to share ideas, in which they want to maintain their own calendar and things like that. I think calendaring was a huge part of it, of just what does everybody really have kind of going on, sharing those resources? So, you know, and I don't know if we'd be sad if one of them was like, "Yeah, we maintain that website."
We wouldn't fight them for it.
Well, thank you for your time. Appreciate the discussion.
Thank you for your presentation.